Policy committee to order. Mm-hmm, excellent. Okay, so where do we wanna start?
Wanna get through the uh I know it's not in the quarter, but do you wanna get through the harassment policies first and then?
Sure, that's a good idea. A secret.
Yeah, so this this three it looks like from this email.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now. Were we required to adopt these or are they just suggesting we do? Cause I read.
Just suggestion, yeah, then you're not required to adopt any of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I read these and then I read what we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
Seems like what we currently have covers the same spirit of what they're trying to do, just in a much more broad, general.
Do you remember what was added to this one? Cause this was sent usually when they're sent from the M A S C, they're um.
And they're completely, I don't wanna say completely different, but they're like the M A S C policies are two pages where I think ours are a couple there.
This was sent by our attorney, right? Yeah, so these are the the reason they.
That's it.
So I mean, that's what that's my question. So if they're suggesting we do it, then probably should, yeah.
Yeah, if the attorneys, you know, usually with the M A S C, you think, okay, some something happened is very broad.
Yeah.
When our own attorneys do it, and really most of what I from what I can gather, just going over them is it's really the procedural part. You know, like this A C A B dash R, they've changed some of the procedures that we have to follow in the building, so it's not necessarily um a policy. But see this A C A B and then it's A C A B R.
Yeah, the A B R we don't have a policy called A B R.
Well, R is a R is a regulation, so that's not in the actual manual, it's just um it's in a separate.
Yeah. And that was the the harassment of employees, I think, is that right? The A C A B R. Yeah, harassment policy, sexual harassment against employees.
A C A B is against students.
Yeah, A C B A R is against.
Yeah. Yeah, against employees.
Yeah, that's Title VII, that's uh discrimination applied based on race.
I'm not a lawyer, so if a lawyer says we should do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Again, it's just, I think they just really wanted to change procedures for dealing with these.
Alright, so A C A C A B and A C A B are uh suggesting to the full committee for first read to replace or add to the current policies we have. Do you agree?
You said A C A C B and A C B dash R.
Yeah.
R.
A C, yeah.
And then the grievance policy process, the Title Nine. That's not a policy that has to be adopted, I think it's just uh, is that what I understand it was here?
Yes.
It's just an administration process.
This is administrative process.
Yeah, and then.
Cause if you just make sure Janelle gets a copy of that, she's the Title Nine coordinator, just make sure she's um she's following the correct procedures.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I mean, we don't get many of them, but um they do have to be followed.
Would this go into the teacher's handbook? How would they get this to know that it's been updated?
We'll put it in the teacher's hand, we'll make sure it goes in the teacher's handbook.
Okay. That's great, thank you.
Yeah, you can send a copy, just send a copy to um Tao also.
Okay.
The final one, J I C K.
This is another one from our attorney.
So how does this one differ from the other two? Cause this includes both students and employees.
Yeah, I agree. And. It's more generally.
Which one does?
That you.
J I C K refers to employee to student and student to student harassment. Is that something specific that A C B, the A C A B ones don't cover? That's why I liked our policies better, cause it was just you you don't harass and period, basically. Play the final two, I guess.
So this one doesn't have um this one here um references, J I C K references Title Nine, which is um discrimination based on sex. So, you know, like the sports, all like the female women's sports go under that. These other ones, um the other A C ones reference Title Seven, which is um discrimination based on race, and it's employment discrimination based on race. So that's the only thing I can see. This this J I C K just looks like it it references Title Nine.
This includes race, all protected classes, race, color, sex, orientation, religion.
Mm-hmm.
But again, this comes from the legal team.
This comes from our attorney.
So.
All of these come from Ross, right, Christie?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, this. Yeah, so is it A C is all discrimination, but then A C A B R is sexual harassment specifically? Is that how it is?
A C is non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. A C A B is sexual uh sexual harassment policy
and it's employees.
against students and dash R is against employees.
Yeah, okay, I see.
Is there a reason to have all these separate policies rather than just one policy that says uh sexual harassment and discrimination is not allowed?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would s- I would agree with what you said before, the attorneys
Yeah.
of the attorneys, we you know, request that will suggest that um we have these. There's uh there's usually a pretty good reason for it.
Alright.
Usually if they come from the M A S C, I'm like, okay, let's go through this and see what we can do, but when they come from Russ's office, you know.
Okay. Yeah, let's let's put that for the full committee then, pull it out, alright. Just get your three, you gonna?
Now, the grievance part, the grievance procedures, which is in there, that doesn't have to be adopted, just reviewed and admin and implemented at the administrative level. That's what that's what Kimberly is.
Yep.
So, and we'll do that, that's the one I was saying, we'll make sure we.
So that doesn't need to go to the committee, that just is for you to.
It's just for us, yeah, to make sure we do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, well, you know, just so you can bring it to the committee instead, we just made the administration aware that these that this is a procedure that needs to be followed. We'll make sure that gets done. Yeah, see, A C A B R, this policy is the sexual harassment policy, the sexual harassment investigations when the employment employee's been harassed, so that's a regulation. The procedure in A C A B, that's specific to Title Nine, which applies to harassment of students. Therefore, A C A B dash R supplement, supplement, A C A B um provide how allegation by employees will be handled. So.
Yeah, alright, so all four for those who'll go for first read to the committee uh for next week?
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll just make sure on our end, we'll go through them and just figure out which ones we need to.
Yeah.
Important place when we get a complaint, so we'll make sure Janelle goes through those.
Okay.
We'll go through all the leaderships on two.
Alright.
Alright, what's the? Let's do this. Well, and um Kim, Kim's um email.
Mm-hmm.
She has a brief description right down here, so you could just kinda pull that out, yeah.
Yes, I. Yep, excellent. That was my thing, I appreciate that, that was my plan, but I was gonna ask.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so when when you have to explain it at some meeting, I'll give you the quickest. Are we gonna take a look at the face covering one, that we?
Yeah, so we have, the last thing is just a lot of talk about COVID again, so do we want to change anything, clear anything up, make anything new?
Yeah.
So, I understand what all the confusion is between, yeah, I see the emails we got and I see online, all the chatter going back and forth. I don't really understand what the confusion was, actually our policies were pretty clear, I thought the protocols were pretty clear, but.
Well, I think what happened is when we looked at this, this is the thing that came from the nurses. We we talked about um.
This is, you're talking back in January?
Yeah, so we talked about, this was from, this is January twenty twenty five, so we talked about the new uh D E S C testing program.
Yeah.
And said, because uh if you remember, the nurses had complained that they, a lot of nurses had complained.
Yeah.
That contact tracing was just taking way too much time and it was ineffective and inefficient, so um we want, you saw, you agreed to get rid of that. And then at the same time, this was statewide, so they wanted to get rid of the test and stay program, which is also becoming a, starting to become a problem. Replace it with the at-home testing.
Yeah.
So, we got rid of all of that stuff, the at-home testing, and when they brought the at-home testing in, they brought in a new protocol.
Right.
Right, so then when we did the masking policy, I think what happened was um it was just assumed that the masking policies were the applied to the s- you know, kids in school when they during the day.
I agree.
And then, but if a kid was positive, then we would go back to the 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 protocols, cause we had already talked about them, so I think that was.
And the protocol is what the CDC suggested, the five days home and then five days with a mask?
Right, Christie, the other thing that I was gonna send last week and I held off on it, can you make a copy of that?
Yeah.
Thought I had that here, I wanted to show them what 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 we were gonna do, um.
And I also believe that they don't, there's no separation of vaccinated and unvaccinated, it's you come back, you wear the mask rate six, that mask days six through ten, yep.
That seems to be one of the points. That was one of the the points of confusion?
That's a, ye- well, no, I think everybody does that, it's the whether they're close contact or not, which I thought close contacts went away with.
You're saying vaccinated versus vaccinated?
So right now, everybody that comes back, to my understanding, great late days six through ten after being positive themselves, they need to wear a mask days six through ten, and it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, you come in and you wear a mask.
Yeah.
Um, I think the issue that we discovered was that the close contacts, if you have a sibling who is positive at home and you're vaccinated, you can go to school. If you're unvaccinated, you miss five days of academic learning, simply because.
That's not a policy, that's what people were just doing.
That's what people were understanding from Desi, cause Desi said they recommended that and we should do that, it didn't say it was.
But we're not contact tracing, so.
Right, but the nurses are referring to Desi, which I did when when we had COVID, five, six weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And, you know, if you read it very quickly to find, just go to the guidelines, you missed the should and the recommended, so I think they think it's policy and therefore they're advising that that's what you do. So, um.
Yeah, cause we don't have anything that says if you're not symptomatic, you don't go to school, or you're not positive.
Right. Right, if you're symptomatic, you should stay home, regardless of
Yeah, sure.
whether someone has COVID or not, you know.
Yeah, for anything, I mean, that's what.
Yeah, it's pretty much how it's supposed to be.
That's how illness has been treated since the dawn of time?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so do we need to put some clarification that unless you're positive or showing symptoms, you can go to school?
I.
Cause the the focus should be on getting kids educated in in the learning because of how bad the situation's been for the last two years, how absolutely far behind, especially as you get into the younger grade, the younger the grade. It seemed like based on the assessment data that we saw a few weeks or a few meetings ago, the lower grade you are, the further or the more damage was done, the further behind you are.
Yes, well.
So.
That's based on the just the data that we saw.
Well, I would feel this way if they said the vaccinated need to stay home and the unvaccinated could come in, either you come in or you don't come in, but I think it needs to be consistent if you're a close contact. I don't think we need to segregate since.
We're not doing close contacts.
Right, that's a good point.
So here's the other thing. Um, I, here's what I think needs a clarification, this is the what, this is what I was gonna send home.
Okay.
And what what I was gonna do is if you look at it, this is, you know, just kinda give an explanation up above about what was going on.
Yeah.
And then strike all the places in the where it says masking, alright?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but as I start to dig further, because this is what the nurses are doing, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
However, you, so you you see that, right?
Yeah.
The proposal that they did on January twenty fifth, which looked like this.
Yeah.
Didn't have all of that, all it said was that, you know, it basically said that, you know, we weren't gonna do contact tracing anymore. Um, we had some stuff about, you know, uh the state data for test and stay. And then the only thing they proposed was the symptomatic testing, it had that and it had
on the chart, yeah.
A, it didn't have anything else but A, and in A, it doesn't talk about unvaccinated versus vaccinated.
Yeah.
This is what I read.
Right.
And it had number two that said at-home testing, so
Yeah.
really what you should do, if you if you're gonna do anything.
Yeah.
You really should say we did talk about on January twenty fifth, a proposal from the nurses. What we agreed to follow, what the school committee agreed to
You voted on.
was this.
Yes.
It wasn't this that had Protocol B also.
Correct.
Alright, so Protocol B is what?
So. Do you have this, do you have this, Christie also?
I, uh, I I have it right here, do you wanna look at it?
I've got it right here.
No, it's this thing I have.
Yes, no, I have it too. The January.
That that I don't have, no, uh, or is it, yeah, no, that I don't have.
Can you make a copy, like, I'll go to.
Uh, okay.
Actually, you know what, by the time I figure out how the machine works, I.
Think this is where the confusion is, is that the school committee has so many different policies, because there was a big regime change, a lot of this fell through the cracks.
This is, this is where the confusion is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, I'm like, where where was the confusion here?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause the school committee agreed to something
Yeah.
that I said we were gonna do and we did it.
Yeah.
And then I'm like, what are they complaining about? Because we adopted, I'm like, you know what, as I'm looking at this, this might not be what we talked about. And then I dug out the other thing, I'm like, God, this was the thing, when we were trying to get the school committee to back off on the close contact stuff.
Mm-hmm.
This is right before the state did it.
Right.
Remember we, cause we put that proposal together before the state did it, because we were saying, you know, this is really taking a long time to do and it's taken a lot from the nurses.
Yeah, J- yeah. Right.
And we're gonna need a like a fifth nurse pretty soon if this keeps up.
And the nurses were on board, correct, so their recognition, that's my thought, yeah.
They wrote it, they wrote that, they wrote that, and then what happened was the state came out with their thing, which was this, this version.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, this is this is garbage, cause this is, this is what got everybody uh about how, you know, you can be a close contact uh in test and stay, but if you test over the weekend, you can't go to school, but if you test Monday morning, you can be in school, or or if you, you can't do sports outside of school, but you can do school, or you can do school, you can do sports outside of school.
Yes, just so.
That was, yeah, I don't remember ever agreeing to this B, and then we got rid of it.
So. Well, no, I think what happened, Mike, as I said, I think the nurses made that proposal
Yeah.
in January.
Right.
And then it was within a week of that, that the state then did this thing, right?
Yeah, we decided the state.
And it muddies the waters, yeah.
Alright, so.
So that, so this, so this is what, this is the, this one right here is what the nurses proposed.
Yes, you just need to verify.
And the committee voted on it.
Yeah, we voted on that the next meeting.
So is that what you voted on?
We voted on that, the meeting following it, through my email.
I think so.
I don't know if you voted, did you vote on this one or this one? Cause they happened at almost the same time.
No, that one, the email that I sent, the one with the thirty-five responses, in my email response to the original email from another committee member, I tagged the minutes from the meeting where we approved this, I bo- that to make it easier to follow.
That's what I remember, cause I don't remember ever voting on B.
You do remember the Protocol B.
Yeah, I remember B.
Right.
Alright, so.
Right.
So I think, and I think that.
But this is how they've been operating.
Well, yeah, because they've been act- what are you, are you looking at the same?
B, yeah, um, A, A, you got A.
Well, A, I get A, so that's the first page.
Yeah.
This is what I was gonna send out as a reminder.
Yeah.
This, just this page?
No, the whole thing, because this is what they've been following.
Yeah.
The whole thing, alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I thought, you know, the there was something else that happened close, and so I went back and I dug the other one out. And then I started thinking about it and I realized that the nurses made a proposal before the state.
That's right, now it's coming together.
Nurse's proposal, we've had so many things to happen all at once, so the nurses came to the principals and to
Oh.
Oh my God. Yeah.
into Janelle and said, the contact tracing is becoming a problem, and at the same time, other nurses in the state were saying it, and the state was developing the test, this, uh
That's right.
the stay-at-home test.
Yeah.
So this all happened at the same time, so we were gonna get rid of the contact tracing
Yeah.
and not have a test and stay, we're just gonna get rid of it all, that's what, that's what the nurses.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna be symptomatic only.
That's right.
Just, it was just gonna be, we need to rid of all of that.
Yes. That's what I remember.
And then the state came within a week and said, oh, we have this new program, so you can, so now you can get rid of test and stay, which we wanted to get rid of anyway.
Right, yeah.
And we said, oh, good, we don't have to do the nurses thing, cause now the state's gonna, they already came through with a program.
Right.
So you do the test and stay and then you adopt their program, which was this.
Right, right.
But we could adopt the distinct at-home testing
Yeah.
and still did the the other.
Right.
Still did this one, the one we, the one the nurses proposed originally.
Right.
So we could have still done the at-home testing with this.
Yeah.
The only thing the state said is you couldn't do test and stay and stay at home in at the same time, so.
I know district that's doing that, which is interesting.
Yeah.
Um, now, so for me, the other issue I had with, you know, vaccinated, unvaccinated, close contact siblings staying home, what, how do you define vaccinated? Are the nurses going in and making sure people have had their boosters or their second shot? It just seems like a lot of work for the nurses.
I think the state.
We specifically discussed not doing vaccinated or unvaccinated, because it discriminates against kids who for whatever reason didn't get a vaccine.
The state defines it as two.
It takes a lot of education.
As what?
As two, two shots, or or one of the uh, Sir Johnson and Johnson.
Yeah.
Right now, okay.
As far as these policies go, shouldn't even be an issue.
Gotcha. I I think, I I agree with you on that.
But I think you need to do the clarification, maybe go back and just say, you know, the the s- the schools brought a proposal from the nurses, uh dated January twenty fifth.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
It asked us to to agree to do away with test and stay and to do away with contact tracing, which we, which we were considering. Within a week of that, the state came out within, or two weeks, the state came out with the the at-home testing. And along with that, it came
The masking.
with a policy that went along with it, these procedures.
Right, okay.
But what we really wanted to do was the stay-at-home test plus just what the nurses proposed.
Yeah.
The symptomatic testing
Yeah.
with the protocol A, just this document, that's the only one we wanted to vote on, so somewhere along the line.
I agree.
And I'm sure, you know, I I was confused about it too, and I had to go back and look, I'm like, what what's what happened here?
Oh. Absolutely.
But I'm, does that sound?
Right, it's a.
That does sound right, and it makes me feel better about why there, we were all kinda like, well, didn't we vote this way, didn't we not?
Yeah.
Because everything happened at once, it was a big explosion, it feels like, and a lot of information came out, and, you know, I think the nurses are are doing a great job and, you know, they're going to look at what Desi's protocol is, cause they, you know, they.
Well, cause this one went along with the at-home testing.
Right.
But Desi said, if you're gonna do the at-home testing, here's the new protocol.
Right.
But we had already looked at this the week before, before Desi came out, you know, even before Desi had the at-home testing.
Before this came out, yeah. Right, we went that route, yeah.
We were just gonna do away, this committee wanted to do away with everything, right?
Yeah. Yeah, remember.
And then when, and then when Desi came out with this.
Yeah.
This came along with this at-home testing, so that protocol is 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 built into this, this.
Yeah.
But I think what the school committee, I think the confusion is that, and and the issue that the school committees have now, when I see the emails, is that you're remembering this document, which is the first one you looked at.
Right.
And said, okay, you can do the, let's do the at-home testing, cause we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
And not make a distinction between the vaccinated, unvaccinated, we'll just do this one and two.
Correct, yeah.
Symptomatic testing and then that Protocol A on the other side.
Right. Yeah, so are you feeling like we have to follow this, that this belies this? Do you know what I mean, like, or or not belies, but um.
This is more thorough.
Yeah.
You know, this certainly is more thorough, but it's that, you know, it's up to what the committee wants here.
Well, because when I read the Desi one, I agree, and and I don't have an, there's some things that I really don't have an issue with. Um, but when I read the part about the vaccinated, unvaccinated, close contacts, which made no sense, cause they said they were getting rid of contact tracing.
Yeah.
It uses words like should and recommend, and I went through it really thoroughly, so I know that we have an option when it comes to, I believe we have an option when it comes to that based on the language.
Well, the other thing you can do, if you want to, you could take this.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then you could go through this, this protocol, this is my, this is my, this is my other, so this right here, we wrote.
This is your, yeah, that's your letter, yeah. Oh, yes, yeah, mail in, yeah.
And then, this is what I was gonna send out and ask if I could hold up on it, okay?
Yes, and, yeah, which I thought was a good idea.
So, we struck the mask, you could go through and strike the rest of it, and then we would increase what we say here and say, in addition, the school committee voted
Yeah. Yeah.
not to make a distinguish, not to distinguish between vaccinated and unvaccinated, so you will see that struck too, and then I'll just, we'll just expand what we write here.
Yes.
We'll keep this policy and we'll just strike more of it.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, if you wanna go through this policy, which is the the state one, the whole, the whole, you know, three pages.
Yeah, yeah.
And just strike the things that you
I see what you're saying, yeah.
you're not, you're not comfortable with, and say, okay, we went through and struck all of the policy piece.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, we struck the masking piece, if you wanna strike the other things, I'll just increase what I say here to the folks, to the community when I send out.
This pool, cause pool, group pool test, when I'm doing that, that's not.
No, we never did.
Strike that.
Now, another question I have, um, and it's just a genuine question, there's no, I don't have any expectation on it. Right now, um, the nurses are not asking for someone to test negative to return to school, they just return to school after, cause I know when Rebecca had it, she just went in and
Mm-hmm.
um, um, Ms. Lam explained to her, this is what you're gonna do, you're gonna come back and wear a mask for five days, she came in, she wore a mask, there was no test required, she'd been symptom-free for twenty-four hours. Um, so right now, they're just making sure that the child is well and that they come back, there's no requirement of testing.
No.
Correct, okay, so I wanted to double check on that.
No, yeah, as far as I know, they don't do a test for the, if you're unvaccinated or vaccinated, I don't think they do.
Right, they don't know, they don't distinguish between, yeah, they're really good.
Yeah, so, I think they're doing that part, but maybe if you wanna go through this policy right here
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that.
and strike, make, you know, and then I will send it out.
Yeah.
I will send it out in this format to the commu- or you, no, you can vote on it Tuesday and then I'll send it out.
Mm-hmm. That's, yeah, yeah.
And then I'll send it out as a reminder of what you just voted on.
That would be great.
Right, yeah, uh.
Cause that might be easier just to use the policy they've been working with and just strike what you don't like.
I agree. Yeah. Yeah.
And then vote on it.
Let's do that right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
So generate for two uh.
So that's all mine, Mike, you don't have to do anything with that.
Yeah. Alright, so Protocol A is uh if you test positive. Individuals who test positive, that's it, there's no other
Yeah.
anything in there. Uh, self-isolation for five days after symptom onset or after a positive test.
Okay, okay, no, sorry, I have a question for that after.
Mm-hmm, no, let's take it right now.
Um, I know that there was a principal who was trying to clarify with good intentions, this policy, and I believe it said, and I could be wrong, that it was five days after a positive test and not after symptom onset.
That may be, but we can set it right now.
Okay, so do we wanna keep it symptom onset? I do wanna keep it or?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a certain, you're gonna. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a cer- you're gonna have cer- symptom onset, from what I understand, is the more important one, cause you could, uh.
Yes, yeah.
As soon as you start showing symptoms, your five-day count starts, right?
Yeah, and I.
Or am I backwards in that?
No, and I I have to admit that in my family, we had symptoms before we tested positive, it was a full day later.
Sure, cause you're not gonna test until you have some.
Right, and so we, even the day that I, we had symptoms, we each tested on the day we came down with it and we wasn't positive, but because we had symptoms, we stayed home.
Alright, so this is, this is one or the other, now, we're not gonna have a forty-five minute discussion on what and/or means.
Yeah. Nope.
But, uh, you either test positive without symptoms and your five-day count starts then, or you show symptoms and your five-day count starts then. It could be either or, uh, you may test after you start showing symptoms.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're positive, then, yeah, you, your five days started at symptom, which is probably the day before you test, in most cases, I would guess, right?
Yeah.
And and if you're, if you're not symptomatic, you just test on Wednesday, because you're going.
If you're doing the at-home test.
Right, and if you're positive, it just starts from then.
From that day, yeah.
If you're, okay.
Yeah, if if, yeah, so if you, for whatever reason you might test, if you're positive, that starts your five-day count.
Right.
Even if you're asymptomatic?
If you're positive, A.
Right.
We could add something in here that if you get a negative test and you think it's a false negative or a false positive, do you wanna do something like that, is that what you're getting at?
I don't, I don't know, that's a good question, I'm not sure.
Well, I think what it does, the ratio, I think it's clear, because it basically says, a self, site, a self-isolation for five days after symptoms.
Mm-hmm.
Or if you, if you don't have symptoms and you test, then it's five days, so that's what you're saying, that's basically.
But you test positive. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, I, I think that's fair as well, I agree.
That's not upsetting everybody.
No, yeah.
Um, alright, so we're clear on that, that's good, duration is good. Return to school after five days and once they have, without fever for twenty-four hours, without medication.
Mm-hmm.
And improvement in other symptoms, okay? Um, that's fine by me, the next part that's struck is the mask situation for five days, which is, that's technically what, uh, the CDC said, right?
The CDC suggested that.
Yeah. How do we feel about that?
Do we strike it, or do we put in there the CDC has suggested that you, but it's not necessary, or, I mean, do we keep, I don't. I don't know how I, I mean.
Well, I think some of the committees, I think some of your members don't.
Don't want it, I know that for sure, I agree, yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm on the fence, if you've been positive, I I don't really believe it's gonna do anything if you wear a mask, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with striking it.
Yeah.
If people on the committee wanna leave it in.
Yeah, and they can, we can amend it, yeah, I agree.
I'm fine with that too. It's already here, so we're good.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, return to school should be based on time and symptom resolution, testing during isolation, return to school.
Perfect, yeah.
And.
Oh, we don't need that if an individual, right?
Yeah, if an individual tests positive as a pool test, we're not doing a pool test.
Should we cross that?
Yeah, we can strike it, we don't do it anyway, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I think people, I think it might mislead people to think we are doing it.
Should, uh.
Asymptomatic.
Should we, one question before we go on.
Yeah.
Do we need to make some sort of clarification that it doesn't matter where you test, cause if if someone's symptomatic in school right now, and they're going down to the nurse's office and their parents have consented to have them tested.
Mm-hmm.
They're getting tested if they're symptomatic, right, at school?
Correct.
But they're also doing testing at home for any number of reasons.
Every Wednesday, that is supposed to do, if they're part of the program.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, even if it's not the at-home Wednesday testing, maybe they go to the doctor and they get a test for whatever reason, should, do we need to clarify that whether whether you test in school or out of school, it doesn't matter, or is that self-explanatory?
I almost.
I think it's, it says after positive P C L or antigen test, I think.
Yeah, doesn't. Yeah, you're right, okay, I just, uh, some people.
Well, you know, I almost wonder if we should put.
Like to get bought down in those details.
Yeah, or or, um, school slash home antigen test, because I do think that there are people that read that differently, I mean, it seems obvious to us, but I think, I almost wonder, or do you think that that makes it more difficult? I mean, do you, you feel it doesn't need to be in there, Jeff?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, okay.
I agree, Jeff.
Yeah.
We're doing so many, so much testing now, that the kid goes down and they're, they, they don't feel while they get tested, they test at home every week.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
No need for gray, we'll leave it black and white.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, let's leave it, okay, I see your point.
Alright. Now, that's good for me, that we, including any of these other pages here, I mean, asymptomatic close contacts, uh, we're not doing that, we didn't wanna do that, we did not think we were doing that.
Yeah. Let's see. Okay, so, individuals will no longer be identified as close contacts by school health professionals, however, individuals may still be identified as close contacts outside of school settings, as close contacts, some of those.
No.
Individuals who have tested positive are encouraged to notify, so this is all suggested language, this is not mandate.
Which if we include it, is gonna confuse people.
Bingo, that's what I think too.
So I think we should. It's, what it basically says is if you're sick, do something, but we have that covered in A.
I agree.
Cause we have symptoms and testing.
Because also down here, it says unvaccinated individuals who are identified as close contacts outside of school settings should stay home and follow protocol B.
Yeah. That seems like that's a little outdated, so.
Yeah.
I I'm for just doing this one page.
Let's see this last one.
So you just want this page?
I think it's simple, if you're sick, stay home.
Yeah. Yeah, because.
Otherwise, go to school.
Cause protocol B has the unvaccinated, and and this is what I'm thinking, you know, and and. As the kids get older, the parents are involved less, when the kids are younger, the parents are more involved, it's just the way of the world, so who's gonna be missing out on as unvaccinated five days out of school, mostly your, your younger kids. Cause the older kids are always, you know, I'm fine, you can tell when your younger child is sick.
And the younger kids are the ones most in trouble right now.
That's what I was thinking, and so it's unfair to steal five days, if if we were, if this was last year at this time, I don't think we'd be having this conversation, but with the knowledge that we have now.
Right.
I I just think it's unfair and those kids need it, every kid needs it, whether they're a twelfth grade or or first grade, but especially those little ones.
Yeah, I mean, I'm for, this is about as simple, I think, as you can get.
Yeah.
If you're sick, stay home, come back after you're not sick.
Alright, so what we'll do is, um, Christie, we'll take the heading off the top, okay, and then we will, um.
Hey, do you need to make a statement like this is to to, I don't know what's the right word, supersede or cancel any previous protocols, policy, or whatever, and from now on, we're going with this? Some sort of language like that?
Um.
I mean, including the face covering policy, but.
Yeah, what?
Cause like you said, there are a lot of, there are a lot of old policies out there floating around that.
It's very confusing for the nurses and for the administration, I mean, I, even we were confused, you know, and we started pulling everything together, like, oh, this is one, this one, this one.
You know, since you're only doing this, if you're gonna do this, you might wanna include this in the face, face covering policy.
Yeah, combine this with that one.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And combine, you're really only doing this.
Yes.
And just have it be one covid policy.
And then. And then, yeah, and then say, and then, yeah, just one covid policy, you know.
I agree. Yeah.
One covid, that's like a, we should market that right now, trademark it.
Yeah.
You could even keep it as, you could even keep it as masking, um, I'll put an addendum if you want, something like that, and then you could revote the policy. So if you revote the policy with the amendment, you make this an amendment to add this into it, and then, you, yeah, this right here.
So we're talking about policy E B C F A?
Yeah.
Revoking that, replacing it with that language, plus this as an amendment?
With this as an amendment, and then I'll send the entire policy out to the.
But do we have to, do we have to even revoke it, do we just add it as an amendment?
No, you just.
Yeah.
And then vote on, add it and re-vote, yeah, now how about protocol C, because that talks about returning if you've tested positive, for symptomatic individuals.
Just add it, yeah, okay. Just this, yeah.
Um.
Alright, probably for the, return to school post symptoms or cautional test.
I mean, I don't know if the third bullet needs to be there, because I think they.
Yeah, so the first two are already covered in A.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that, yeah.
Right, the third one, we decided to take out of A.
Yes.
Right, and the fourth one.
Yeah, we got rid of the fourth one, yeah.
Fourth one, we took out of A as well.
Yeah. Yeah, then maybe we don't need this, cause it's covered in A.
And then this please note, if you have mild symptoms, I feel most people would consider that you're still symptomatic, so you.
Yeah.
You know, you're not covered under A.
So should we keep that part, put that part into the protocol A underneath it?
I think we have it covered, I think we have it covered, cause A has a return to school after five days and once you've been without fever for twenty-four hours.
Yeah. Right.
And improve, this says improvement in other system, symptoms, this would contradict that.
Yeah. I agree, I see what you're saying now.
So I mean, the only part that we would consider would be this please note, but I think that's covered pretty well under A already.
Yeah, because I like the fact that it says symptom onset, it doesn't give it a, what is this one, mild symptoms, it just symptom onset.
Yeah, and I mean, uh, the idea of needing a negative test to return, uh, doctors.
Hmm, but you can test positive for a long time, yeah.
Doctors, the the Nishoba Board of Health.
Yeah.
Told me, no, because you can be still getting readings and you're not actually contagious, so, I think we should take the Nishoba Board of Health's recommendation and not do that.
Perfect. I would completely agree.
So, Christie, could you just figure out how we would add this in to amend the policy for s- school committee vote?
Yes.
Just the first page, not any of the.
Just the first page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what we'll do is, once you vote on it, Christie, we'll s- do this, take this, put on letterhead, use this language here.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And then add the policy, the entire policy to be sent out.
Yeah.
And then, I'll s- we send it, well, Wednesday, we'll send it to the buildings to say this is, this is what the new.
Yeah. Okay.
Policy is.
Provided it passes.[1624.11]